From the southeastern corner of western North Carolina, this is Polk Lore. I'm your host, James Hernition. This is a second in a series of interviews with candidates for the Polk School's Board of Education. If you haven't already listened to the first interview with Mike Ashworth, I'd recommend you run through at least the first few minutes, as I supply an overview of the elections, which seats are up for grabs, and why I chose to interview who I did. In this episode, I talk with Rob Parsons, the current Saluda representative on the board and the pastor of Saluda's United Methodist Church. We recorded the interview early in September among the pews of his church in Saluda. Rob Parsons, welcome to the podcast.
Thanks so much. I'm delighted to be here today.
So let's do what we always do with these candidate interviews. Talk about why you want to be on the board. How did you come to decide that serving on a school board is something that made sense for you?
So, yeah, it's kind of interesting because a decision like this for me goes way back. When I was in second grade, my teacher came to me one morning and said, "Rob, it's time for you to go to speech therapy." And I said, "Speech therapy? What for?" And I gotta admit, and it's for that reason, because this school, I went to public schools, this school did two things. One, it provided the resource that was going to help me be successful as a person later on. And number two, it provided the culture where I didn't even know I needed that help. There was this desire to help and not bring shame or judgment or anything on it. And so for me, that's the thing, is I want our schools to be able to provide the resources and the culture for our kids to be the best they can be.
Well, it's hard to argue with that. But why do you want to be on the board?
So, the other follow-up to that would be, some years back, when I was serving a church here in Saluda, and as a matter of fact, it's kind of fun, when I sit in my office, I look up at my great-grandmother's driveway. They sold the house here in the 30s, but we eventually made it back to Saluda. Loved being in Saluda. And the elementary school principal called and said, "Hey, we've had our summer school budget cut. Can our kids work in with some of your programs?" And we began to work together as a community, not just a single church, but more than just a church. We helped with that summer school program, and the next thing you know, we also brought in congregations or communities for children, which was a reading mentoring project that brought everybody together. And we saw the scores for the kids go up, who were part of this project. And I was like, "That's why we need to be involved in our schools, and that's why I want to be involved as a school board member, is because the community support makes such a difference, and there are things we can do to move the needle." And that's why I'm excited to be part of the school board now and hopefully in the future.
You joined last year when a vacancy came up. Sarah Bell chose to step down and take over the community foundation. Was that for you an opportunity that you were waiting for? Or were you kind of thinking, "They'd take you by surprise like it did most people"?
No, I gotta admit, I had kids in the schools here for 18 years. We were deeply involved then. While I continued to support the schools in a lot of administrative or advocacy ways throughout the community, I hadn't really envisioned this. So it was absolutely a surprise for me. But it also absolutely fits with what I believe in and what I've been dedicated to doing in our community.
All right. So we will then proceed to the next question, which is, school boards in North Carolina have a finite number of things over which they have any real control. There's a lot of restrictions placed by the state on the curriculum, on what they can pay their employees, although there's a little bit of leeway with thanks to the commissioner's support. But among the things that you do have control over as a school board member, what are the things you want to focus on?
A couple of things. One is the school-community collaboration. I think it's so important, not only for the schools to support our communities and our businesses to support the school, but also for our schools to think about supporting the businesses and communities. So that's why our career in technical education work is so important, and bringing that collaboration together, so it's not just the school preparing folks without really having great interaction and interface with what's going on in the businesses of our community. So it's important to have some interaction there. The other thing that's important is to put some policies in place. I know a lot of people are concerned about what's going on in our schools, and there are some issues with that. But we're putting some policies in place that allow people to ask the questions they need to ask and get the responses they need. And so that's an important thing for us to do, too.
Well, the interaction between the community and the schools in the past has been very low-key, right? Let's face it, very few people would show up to a school board meeting. And we had a relatively long stretch there where very few people paid much attention to the schools because they were doing so well. So don't tinker with what works, right? And something has changed over the last couple of years. So school boards are no longer going to be as under the radar as they used to be. And my biggest question to all the candidates is, what are we doing now that we really could be doing a lot better?
So one of the things that's crucial for the school board is budgeting and expenses and things like that. And so it's important for us to advocate for continued strength in our budgeting process, in the income we get. There are times, I believe, where we as a community decide to hold salaries at set levels and things like that. But then there also needs to be a time when we get a chance to say, "Look, if we're going to keep the top-notch teachers and staff here, we may need to look at how we can support them financially, too." Especially when someone can cross over the border into South Carolina, do the exact same job, and make $10,000 a year more. So it's important for us to be responsive to those kinds of needs. So that's part of what we need to do also. The flip side, too, with how, like you say, the school board and some of these issues used to just fly under the radar, I think it's important that we be transparent. We need to be open, and people can see what's going on. In the same fashion, it's important for us to stay focused on what our job is and what our tasks are, and not to be blown side by side by whatever winds come along that are currently there. So it's important to stay focused and work on those bigger issues.
Some of the issues that were before the board, shortly before you joined, were not handled, I think everybody on the board would agree, in the optimal manner. When the board had to reverse course on masking issues, when the choice was either keep the schools open or not. And the book challenge issue, the board has also changed the way it's going to handle responses to challenges to books. Now, you weren't on the board until relatively recently, but do you have any thoughts on how those issues were handled?
Yeah. So one of them is, it's important to bring all our best thinking, all our best collaborating together to make these kinds of decisions when we venture someplace that we've never been before. How do you navigate someplace you don't really have a map for? And so it's important for us to be open, have those discussions. Not everybody's going to be in agreement, but there are also some values that are key to help guide us along that way. And health is one. I gotta admit, I don't have a degree in public health or anything like that. We see how some of the findings are sort of changing as we go, but you know what? It was in real time, we had to make real-time decisions. The school board did. I wasn't there at the time. And so I respect that, their judgment calls, that sometimes you just take all the information you have and do the best you can. And so I think there's room for grace in a moment like that, but there are decisions that come at full speed, and you gotta make them. On the other hand, the issue regarding books is huge, that we're talking about what books we can and can't have in schools. And the policy we've put in place, and I think what we're working towards in the future, will be that parents can talk about what their kids can or cannot check out, if there are books in the library that they're concerned about. But it's important, the phrase I like is, "There's a book for everybody in the library, but not every book is for everybody." What that means is, you may have interests, you may have some things that you're working on, that you find a book especially helpful for. That may not be what I'm into. That may not be what I want my kids into. But you know what? There is something for my kids in the library. So I think it's important for us to realize that we're a big community, not in numbers, but in experience and different cultures we come from. So it's important to keep that, to make sure that that library, that our school, our curriculum, can meet the needs of every child that we have come along. But everything is not for every child. Some kids need special classes, other kids don't. And it's same with books in the library.
Well, how do you answer a parent who says, "I'm worried not about what books are available for my children, but the fact that some books are available to every child, and I don't want those books available to every child." I mean, this is the fundamental culture war we're having right now, right? There are those who want to change the nature of the material in the curriculum and in libraries. How do you respond to their concerns?
So I think for me, it's real important to talk in specific issues. So tell me about a book that your child got into that you think's problematic. Because when we just talk about it in theory, I'm struggling with that. Or if there's a specific book that you think might be an issue, how did that come about? What's been your experience of that? Can we address that? Because that's, again, one thing that I know our school staff is real keen on being able to address your issues, come directly to them. There's a process for that. And if you feel like things aren't being taken care of, you can always go to the school's superintendent. So there's that in process. The other thing is, for us, I think, to again, realize it's important for us to deal with what's going on here, and not necessarily to try and solve all the nation's problems on our school board time. So there are maybe bigger issues that people are working on, or issues that folks are concerned about. But what I want to talk about, what I want to work on, are the specific issues here. You look like you've got a lead-on question with that.
Well, my take on this issue has been that the conflict that has been brought to the board about the nature of the books that are available is driven by a national agenda. And it's really hard to separate the national from the local when the two sides really aren't talking on the same wavelength, right? This gets into a related issue, which I wanted to talk to everybody about, and that is the politicization of the school board. We came very close to turning the school board into a partisan operation, and fortunately that plan was abandoned. But there still is a lot of material being brought to the board that clearly is not coming from Polk County. It's coming from folks maybe in Washington DC or somewhere else.
So to address these issues of what feels like a national agenda being played out in a local way, I heard the person who brought the issue of critical race theory to the national forefront, in an interview, how he said, "The president needs to do an executive order and get CRT out of our schools." Well, I heard him in an interview later, when he talked about, critical race theory wasn't the big issue. The big issue was moving towards more vouchers, more private schools, more ways besides the classic public school. That, to me, is a local issue. Being on the school board, it's important that we offer to our children the resources and the will to provide what they need. Now, granted, there are some folks who are like, "My kids need to be in a religious school. They need to be in a magnet school or something else." That's fine, but I don't think it should dismantle the public institution that's meant to be a public good here. It's just like, just because, I live a mile out of gravel road, right? And it's not paved because I decided to go out that way, right? I don't ask the state to rake the road or to pave it. That's on me. But I also don't want the state to quit making paved roads, right? Just because they're not paving my road. I use those roads, right? Those resources I use all the time, too. In a like manner, it's important for us as a community to support the resource that is our schools, that enriches our children's lives, enriches the lives of their families, and is the economic engine upon which our county functions.
Well, I wouldn't be bothering with interviewing candidates for school board if I didn't believe in public schools. And obviously, as a member of the school board, you believe in public schools. But it seems to me that sometimes the debate really is between those who aren't fans of public schooling. And it's somehow ended up at public school board meetings, where those who really don't trust the schools to educate their children the way they want, are working to undermine public schools. Now, that should be beyond the scope of a school board. Like, if you're all sitting on the school board, you've all agreed, public schools are worth protecting and supporting. Is it possible to somehow keep the other folks out of the debate?
My understanding is, no. We've had folks in our school board meetings who not only don't have children in the schools or never had children in the schools, or won't have children in the schools, they also don't live in the county. Again, I want to be able to respond specifically to what's going on locally, to make sure we're providing the best education for our kids. And I think private school, other kinds of systems like that are absolutely appropriate, but I would say not at the expense of our public schools. That it's important for us, we are charged as elected officials to represent the whole county on that issue. And so, yeah, we hear those concerns. We work on education across the board, and some folks choose not to do that, and other folks choose to stay with it. So to me, the thing that's disturbing is, people are deep into these discussions, and then I hear them say, "So what does CRT mean? Or what really is it? Or what about these books?" I mean, one of my great concerns is, we're looking at taking some books out of the library that could have been, I'll almost say, life-saving for kids to read them. Because they live in a culture where we're not going to talk about issues of abuse. We're not going to talk about issues of sexuality or whatever, that they may be going through themselves, and they're not able to talk to anybody about it. The other thing is, I've heard people say, "Well, this book is encouraging pedophilia." And I'm like, "It's not. Have you read the whole book? The one I'm thinking of? It's not encouraging those acts. It acknowledges that that sometimes happens in the world, but it's not a good thing." But you know what? For someone who is being told, "Oh, this is normal. This is okay. This kind of abuse." It's not. And that might be the only place they hear that. Yeah, if someone wants to talk about that, I'd be glad to talk about it. I've had personal experiences of folks in my life who've had those struggles. And it's important to be able to have those conversations.
This reminds me of something I discovered when I moved to this country, and that is that the schools in the United States, and Polk County is a perfect example, do more than just educate. They are a critical element of the social fabric of our society, and they help feed kids who may not be able to get three meals a day, and they provide a safe place for kids who aren't always feeling safe at home. Do you think about that when you're sitting around a table with all the fellow members, just doing the boring administrative work?
Yeah. I mean, you can provide the best lessons in arithmetic available to the world, but if you're hungry, if you've got other issues on your mind that you can't settle, if you don't know where you're going to sleep tonight, that's going to affect your ability to learn. We're not social services. There are social services. Sometimes the school has to be a link to that, if they suspect that there is abuse or neglect at the level that justifies intervention, or at least checking on it. But just getting information is not education. So it takes a culture that supports it, believing that it's good to learn, believing that asking those, learning how to ask good questions, all those kinds of things are part of learning that carry us beyond school. That, for me, is the end. School is not the end in and of itself. The education is what's meant to carry us along as good citizens throughout our lives. And so we do look at some of the bigger issues, because we care about our kids. We care about their families, and we want the best for them. We'll let them direct that. But again, we offer resources and the culture of support.
The last thing that I wanted to discuss is something that I didn't anticipate, again, when I first started thinking about schools, and that is, a school board is there to represent the community in the management of the schools. But it seems like, to me, it already has acquired a second role in this culture war we found ourselves in, and that's protecting the staff from community, attack is a hard word, but...
Harassment.
Harassment, yeah. And how comfortable are you at balancing the need to protect the teachers and the staff against the, maybe sometimes legitimate concerns of parents?
Yeah. So anybody who has first-line contact with kids need to be child advocates. When we took our first child to her first pediatric appointment, the doctor spent all her time talking to us, the parents, about what the child needed. And I was like, "Aren't you going to focus on the child?" They're like, "Yeah, but you know what? I'm only here for an hour, but you're with that child all the time." So our parents are important, and our teachers are important, because they're with our kids a big chunk of the day. And we have some of the best teachers in North Carolina. In fact, in 2020, Polk County's school system was ranked the number-one school system to work for, best workplace. It ranked about the same height on the level of the teachers that were here. And I've heard teachers who are willing to commute from out of town, out of county, to come because they love working with these kids, they love the system. And now they're concerned about, they're like, "You know, I don't know if it's worth it." Because they're getting harassed about what's going on in their classrooms, when it's been the same over all these years they've been teaching there. Again, transparency is important. People can ask these questions, but are they local questions? Are they questions that came out of what your child's experiencing? Or are they questions that came from somewhere else? Because our teachers are working really hard, and I absolutely do want to make sure that our teachers are respected, that they're encouraged, that their salaries are sufficient, that they can have the kind of life that's important to them, and that they're safe. And so that's taking care of the issues across the board for them. So I think it's absolutely important. And probably about 1,000 words more than you needed.
I think, actually, a lot of people will be paying very close attention to that.
I know people are struggling with just the right answer. It's like, here's the two-sentence response to that. "We've never taught critical race theory in schools. We're not teaching it now, and we're not going to teach it. That's just not part of K-12 curriculum. We're not going to do that." But for me, it's important to talk about some of those issues that maybe go a little bit deeper, that say, "You know what we're doing is, with this conversation, we're subverting the training our kids need to be able to ask questions of history, of science, of literature, of all those things." We want to raise people who, we talk about, we want to have hometown values that prepare you for a big world. And part of that is being able to ask questions. I want my kids and our kids in school now to go way beyond where I am, what I've learned or what I think about. There's space beyond that I haven't even thought of. And I'm not preparing, I didn't prepare my kids to be me. Lord knows, I hope they'll be better than me, you know? And that's what's important in being able to ask questions.
It occurs to me that part of this secondary responsibility to protect teachers and staff from the culture wars also implies a responsibility to explain what's going on at school to the broader community. One of the reasons I think some parents are feeling like the board doesn't give them an opportunity to have input is that public comment is left to the very end. After you've already talked about everything, you get three minutes, and then no one on the board says anything, and everybody goes home. And I understand why that system is there, and it probably is there in part because after many years of nobody showing up to board meetings, there's not much thought given to the public input part of the agenda. But is there a case to be made for maybe more interaction during the board? For board members to maybe ask questions of the parents who are raising concerns, instead of it all being kind of...
Kind of one-sided.
One-sided. The word is asynchronous. It's like, one person says something, and then we move on, and then someone else says something, and then we move on again. I'm not saying that I don't, that I think the school board isn't receptive to input, and I made this point talking with Mike Ashworth in the last episode. I've never met a group of people, including the board and the superintendent's office, where you can just call them up at any old time and talk. I mean, it's very, very open and transparent, but the school board meetings are certainly very formal and not particularly conducive to having a conversation.
Yeah. So a couple of things to that. I've heard someone's got a blog out there, is talking about the school board member who's just doodling on his iPad during the input. Well, that's me. I'm not doodling on my iPad, though, and I can go back and tell you who spoke before you in that February meeting because of my notes. I'm taking detailed notes. I can tell you who didn't speak that meeting, who maybe was signed up to but didn't speak. So I am paying really close attention. But the issue, so for me, I look at the school board meeting as a business meeting. There are things we need to get through and things like that. So I kind of feel like to have, I mean, there needs perhaps a different setting to address these issues. to address these issues. Because 20 minutes even would not be enough in, in these settings. So, but the reality of it is, that ends the public version of our meeting. Then we go into closed session. And that's where we talk about issues that aren't for public's sake, right? You know, salaries and-
Personnel matters.
Yeah, personnel matters and things like that. So, I think, you know, I'm always up for, for having a discussion, but I think it needs to happen in a setting that's meant to be a, a discussion like that. That's currently how the, the school board is set up. So, there's, you know, just trying to live into that.
Well, it is kind of like a square peg in a round hole, because as you point out, it's really primarily a business meeting.
Right.
You're trying to take care of all the things you have to take care of, because you're required legislatively to do it. But when I think about the unusual circumstances of a pandemic, and people show up to a meeting to, to see the board handle this unusual situation, and they hear almost no one say anything, and at the end, take a vote to either impose masks or do away with masks. And there's no sense of a conversation, of a debate, of any uncertainty. It's everyone, I mean, if you go back to, to the, the very first vote on this issue, it was seven to one against bringing in the policies that the state health department had recommended. And no explanation of why. I think that it would be helpful, and hopefully, I'm, I'm trying to guess whether you agree, would it be helpful to not have that level of opaqueness about important decisions in the public forum?
Couple of things on that. For me, one is, I think the, the board needs to do its own homework, in a sense. So, there's education stuff that needs to happen. And for that to happen, I think it's, it's appropriate to be, to not do that in, in public, right? To not just sort of show up and go, well, what's everybody got? You know, I don't know. So, I think there's, there's a period and a time to do our own homework. And again, I'm speaking retroactively into-
Yes. To be clear, you weren't part of that seven-to-one vote.
I wasn't there. I don't know the process that went on. You know, I wasn't privy to that, so I don't know how that went on. And so, I, for me, it's more speaking towards issues of like, what, you know, what we're talking about with books, with critical race theory, with socio-economic, socio-emotional learning, all those things. I think it's important for the board to do its own homework. I think it's important for people to do their own homework, and to have a chance to come together and, and talk about it, I think's an appropriate thing. But it's interesting. Sometimes you get a, a board meeting, and all the, the public response is against the board in some ways. You have another meeting, and it's like, all the public response is for the board. It's like, none of those situations really represent the community as a whole, right? I mean, the community as a whole is mixed all the time. So, it's just, yeah. I mean, I think, I think, and this is absolutely speaking out of, out of turn, that seeking greater engagement on these issues should happen outside of a business meeting, where you can really focus on those issues. That people don't feel like they're having to respond to something that, that they weren't prepared for, or that, you know, the, you know, and sometimes it's, you know, it's important for the board to come together, and we don't agree on everything. But the board comes forward with one voice in that sense, with one vote. I don't know. Maybe you can edit this whole section out.
No, I think, actually, it's a really good discussion, because this notion of, of how, it goes back to the very first thing you, you said in this interview, and that's, we need to talk about how the board communicates and engages with the greater community. And my expectation is that this election will actually produce a, perhaps a slightly different board that might have a slightly different approach to how it tackles those issues.
It could, it could. And, and I always have to say, you know, I'm, I am the junior member on this board, and there are folks who've been there a, a generation longer than, than I have, you know? And I don't speak for the board as a whole, right? And, you know, it's important to, to recognize that. So-
All right. Well, we'll see how it turns out. Good luck in the campaign.
Thank you very much.
And that's where we stopped recording. Although, as I do these podcasts, I'm learning that there's almost always so much more we could talk about. And if I'm still doing this a year from now, I think it's a safe bet that I'll have Rob back on to talk about something else, whether or not he is still the salutare rep on the Board of Education. In the next episode, I'll be talking with Brittany Klimstra, who wants to represent Green Creek on the board. Thanks for listening. And as always, if you have any suggestions or feedback, please get ahold of me at jamesh@polklor.com.